Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. If I may ask, let me raise the council and take their seats. On va commencer la réunion dans une minute. We'll start the meeting in one minute. Merci. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Ottawa City Council Meeting of Wednesday, the 23rd of October, 2019. Bienvenue à la conseilure municipale de l'Avie d'Autreuil pour le ventoctobre de midi snuff. Rogers Cable tells us there's some technical difficulties, so at this point, unfortunately, we only have audio. I told the choir from Woodruff that they'll be watched by dozens and dozens of people on Cable 22. They got a little nervous, but apparently there's audio only for the time being. And those of you who could stand for a moment of personal reflection, please do, and remain standing, and we'll have an introduction of our special guest for the National Anthem. If you could remain standing, we'll ask Councillor Kavanaugh to introduce our very special guest, who will sing our National Anthem. Merci.
Thank you very much. It's my absolute pleasure to introduce Teacher Alison Briggs and the Woodruff High School Vocal Group. It's a class. It was always my pleasure to visit Woodruff High School in those eight years that I was a trustee there. It's a fabulous school, and I think you're going to hear why it's so fabulous. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Woodruff High School, for that wonderful rendition of our National Anthem, and thank you, Councillor Kavanaugh. The Mayor's City Builder Award is presented today to Moses and Kelly Pratt in recognition of their many contributions to our community, highlighted by their work to promote unity and celebrate diversity. Moses and Kelly are with us, and I'd ask them to come forward at this time. I'd also ask Cumberland Ward Councillor Stephen Blay and Orleans Ward Councillor Matt Luloff to also join us for the presentation. And I want to extend a very warm welcome to the many family and friends of Moses and Kelly who have joined us this morning. J'aimerais souhaiter la bienvenue à la famille et aux amis de Moses et Kelly qui se jointent à nous aujourd'hui. Welcome, welcome. This award recognizes individuals who have demonstrated an extraordinary commitment to making our city a better place through volunteerism or exemplary action. Moses and Kelly Pratt certainly meet these criteria. Moses et Kelly répondent au cérémonie aux critères. An exceptional schoolteacher for almost three decades. I understand he began teaching here in Ottawa at St. Francis of Assisi School in Orleans. Kelly and Moses have dedicated most of their lives towards celebrating and promoting diversity and unity in our community. The Prats established Ottawa's Global Community Alliance, which aims to recognize the efforts of individuals, organizations, and businesses who serve as good community role models and want to make a difference in their community. For the past 10 years, the organization's annual awards ceremony, which is organized by Moses and Kelly and helps celebrate Black History Month, has been recognizing members of the community who promote diversity and inclusion in their professional and everyday lives. Over the years, the awards have recognized excellence from students, members of local business community, professionals and community leaders that help build stronger, united communities in Ottawa. Proceeds from the gala in the past have gone towards important organizations, programs, and causes in our community, including the Ottawa School of Breakfast Program, Black History Ottawa, and various relief efforts. At the 2016 Award Galas, Moses was recognized for his outstanding contributions to our community and his promotion of diversity and inclusion with the United Way Community Builder Award. In addition to his and Kelly's work with Ottawa's Global Community Alliance, Moses is recognized as a founding member of the Nigerian-Canadian Association in Ottawa and is involved in a number of other cultural and heritage groups. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Moses and Kelly for their many contributions to our community and for their strong commitment to promoting diversity and inclusion. It's my pleasure, on behalf of Councillors Luloff and Blay, to present both of you with the Mayor's City Builder Award. Congratulations. C'est mon plaisir de vous présenter avec ce prix ce matin avec Conseiller Luloff et Blay. Flicitations et continuez votre beau travail. Congratulations and continue the great work you're doing. Thank you. Well done. We're going to give you Moses. Kelly, come on out here. We've got a little good picture.
Good morning, everyone. Members of council, it's Wednesday, Mayor Jim Watson, and my special friends, Councillor Briggs and Councillor Luloff. It's quite an honor for myself and my wife Kelly to be receiving this award from the city of Ottawa. Actually, there's not much for me to say, because I think the mayor said everything about us and about the organization. Yes, I'd say to thank all of you that have been supporting us. Quite a number of members of the council have actually attended the gala in the past, and that's the success behind it. And in addition to that, I'd like to thank members of my Nigerian community and other members from the Ottawa community that came here to support us today. Without them, this wouldn't be possible. So, like I said, thank you very much, and Global Community Alliance is here to say we have a gala last Saturday of February, so the next one will be February 29th, and I'll be contacting some of the, or all the councillors who invite you. Thanks again.
I'd just like to reiterate a big thank you to everybody, our friends, our family, our community members, members of the council, Mayor Jim Watson. Thanks so much. This is such an honor. We've been doing this for going on 11 years now, and it's nice to know that the work that we've been doing for all these years hasn't gone unnoticed. Thank you very much.
Thank you again. For our next presentation, I'm pleased to ask Councillor Blay, Councillor Fleury, our sports commissioner, Councillor Theresa Kavanaugh, he is on for women and gender equity, and members of the Ottawa TFC Academy U-17 team and their coaches and board members to join me up here in the circle. So, welcome to our national champions. We had an opportunity earlier today to have a small reception for these very talented young women.
Thank you very much.
And we've got the hardware to prove it, and the medals. Maybe just sort of surround here, get some people over here. Theresa, come on in. There we go, right next to her. Is it heavy? Okay. Come on over this way, folks. Well, earlier this month, the Ottawa TFC Academy U-17 Girls Team traveled to Charlottetown as Ontario's representative at the U-17 Girls National Championships. And I'm very thrilled to say that they made our city very proud by capturing the national title. Congratulations. And I understand that they're the first, the very first Ottawa-based team, female or male, to win the U-17 National Championships, and I want to extend my sincere congratulations on behalf of all my colleagues on City Council for this tremendous effort. And it's been quite an amazing journey for this team. Their 2-1 victory over the team representing Quebec Lake Shore SC in the final at the National Championships capped off an incredible run. Many say that the defense is key to winning, and the Ottawa TFC U-17 Girls Academy team was outstanding on that front. They allowed just two goals in five games. Who's your goalie? Lady, come on up here. Isn't that amazing? Just two goals. Two goals in five games, along with allowing only a single goal on their way to winning the Ontario Cup. So this is the Ontario Cup, and that's the National Cup right over there. Ontario's bigger than Canada. Look at that. In addition to their accomplishments on the field, the Ottawa TFC Academy U-17 Girls Team has made our city very proud for their sportsmanship, hard work, and dedication. The team members are fantastic role models, not only for up-and-coming soccer players here in our city, but throughout the country. And I'd like to take this opportunity to extend my congratulations on behalf of council to everyone involved with the team, the players, coaches, parents, supporters, on this wonderful achievement. Wave if you're a family member of some of the folks out here. These folks deserve a big round of applause. They had to do all of the fundraising and get you all equipped and off to Charlottetown, and that was a lot of work. So you've worked very hard to achieve this goal, and I now have the pleasure of presenting the team with a proclamation. If Heather is right there. So it's my pleasure to officially proclaim October 23rd, 2019, Ottawa TFC Under-17 Girls Soccer Team Day. Congratulations. So I'd now like to invite Lauren Curran, a player with Ottawa TFC, to say a few words. Lauren.
Good morning, Mayor Jim Watson, City of Ottawa councillors, and everyone gathered here today. I'm Lauren Curran, co-captain of the U-17 Girls Ottawa TFC Academy team. On behalf of my team, we thank you for recognizing our accomplishment, winning the 2019 Toronto National Championships. We were honored to represent Ottawa and Ontario at a national competition. Our team is made up of players from three age groups who have all grown up at this club under the leadership and vision of our head coach Pavel Kankura. We are the first U-17 Girls Team from Eastern Ontario to win the Ontario Cup since it was founded 43 years ago. We are also the first Ottawa Team to win this National Championship at the Girls U-17 level since the tournament started 35 years ago. It is our hope that we've started a legacy for the younger girls at Ottawa TFC and in the city of Ottawa to set high goals and believe in themselves to achieve them. Thank you, worship, for having us here today.
So very, very well said, Lauren. Thank you. And to all the players, we're really, really proud of you. You've made us feel terrific about soccer. I know they play in Steve Blay's award at Millennium Field, and you've already started lobbying for a dome, I understand. So Steve, get on that, okay? So let's...
Dan heard that, right?
Dan Chenier, okay, there we go. So why don't we just get all the players and coaches to come out, and Chris will take a picture, and we'll... I know you probably are dying to go back to school, right? No? All right. Where do you want us to go, Chris? All right. I don't know if we move this thing here. How do we move that?
Just players and coaches, yeah.
... and obviously to our great soccer championships, champions, rather. Roll call, please, Madam Deputy Clerk.
Councillor Luloff. Councillor Dudas.
Here.
Councillor Harder.
Here.
Councillor Suds. Councillor Alshantiari.
Present.
Councillor Gower.
Here.
Councillor Kavanaugh.
Present.
Councillor Shirelli.
Councillor Egli.
Here.
Councillor Deans.
Councillor Tierney.
Present.
Conseiller Fleury.
Ici.
Councillor King.
Here.
Councillor McKenney.
Present.
Councillor Leeper.
Here.
Councillor Brockington.
Here.
Councillor Menard.
Present.
Conseiller Cloutier.
Present.
Conseiller Blay.
Present.
Councillor DeRus.
Here.
Councillor Moffett.
Here.
Councillor Mihem.
Here.
Councillor Hubley. Mayor Watson.
Ici.
Adoption, the process will be confirmation of the regular and in camera minutes of the council meeting of October 9th, 2019 carried. Declaration of interests, including those arising from prior meetings, declaration de conflit d'intérêt, y compris ce décollant de réunion entière. None. Communications is presented. Regrets, Councillor Deans. See motion number 20/1 of September 25th, 2019. Rick Shirelli, Alan Hubley, and Jenna Suds advise they be absent from the city council meeting of October 23rd, 2019. Motion to introduce reports. Motion important presentation de rapport. Councillor Gower, seconded by Councillor Luloff, please.
That Community and Protective Services Committee report seven. Standing Committee on Environmental Protection, Wastewater and Waste Management report six. Planning Committee report 14, and the report from the city clerk entitled Summary of Oral and Written Public Submissions for Items Subject to the Planning Act: Explanation Requirements at the City Council Meeting of October 9th, 2019 be received and considered.
On the motion carried, adopted. Committee reports, rapport des comités communautaires et protecteurs, report number seven. Rapport numéro sept des comités des services communautaires de protection. Item number one, Security and Emergency Management Service 2018 Annual Report, direction de la sécurité et la gestion d'urgence, rapport annuel de midi suite. Received. Item two, feasibility of review of on-demand accessible taxi cab service. We have a motion by councillor, by myself, rather, seconded by Councillor Luloff. Whereas at its meeting of October 17th, 2019, CPS approved a motion recommending council direct staff to proceed with the retention of a consultant to undertake a study on on- of on-demand accessible taxi cab service with the anticipated $25,000 cost to be funded through the Emergency Protective Services operating budget. Whereas staff advise this can already be accommodated within their planned 2020 budget for consulting services will not result in an increased budget asked for 2020. Whereas council cannot pre-commit the 2020 budget, which will be considered and approved by council in December 2019, therefore be it resolved that committee recommendation to be amended to ma- to add, quote, "subject to council's approval of the 2020 budget." So on the motion carried, on the mo- the motion as presented, amended, rather, carried. Thank you. Item three, motion rat complaints inquiry. We have a deferral, Councillor Fleury.
Seconded by Councillor Egli. Be it resolved that this item be deferred to the next regular city council meeting scheduled for November 6th, 2019.
I think we're waiting for a legal opinion, so that's the reason for that. So on deferral, carried. Okay, thank you. Excuse me. Standing Committee on Environmental Protection, Water and Waste Management, report number six. Comité permanent de la protection de l'avenir normal et de l'eau et de la gestion des échets. Rapport numéro six. Item number four, Robert Pickard Environmental Center Electrical Reliability and Efficient Use of Digestor Gas Project. Carried. Item, Planning Committee report number 14. Rapport numéro quatorze des comités de l'urbanisme. Item number five, zoning floodplain mapping updates phase three. Zonage mise à jour de la cartographie des plaines inonables phase trois. Councillor Harder, you have a technical amendment, I believe, that adjusts the map, seconded by Councillor Tierney, if you'd like to introduce that now, please.
Yes, thank you. This is so that a request has been made for additional time to allow for further discussion between the landowners and the Mississippi Valley Conservation Authority to determine whether the board approved floodplain boundary is accurate. So the adjustment or amendments to the floodplain overlay and zoning bylaw 2008-250, as shown in documents one and two, basically, and detailed in documents three and four, are amended, and they, these are, these are two in Canada, specifically.
I think Councillor Suds is supportive of this.
Yes, she is, yes. She asked me to move that.
Okay, we'll come back to that, because Councillor Tierney has asked, did it be held? Or Councillor Leeper, excuse me. Item number six, memorandum of understanding between the City of Ottawa and 801 Albert Street, Inc., Protocol d'entente entre la Ville d'Autreuil et Witze-01 Albert Street, Inc. Carried. And thanks, Councillor McKenney, this is work that you did to ensure, I think this is the largest affordable housing grant that any project has ever received, so good luck and good work on that. Item number seven, zoning bylaw amendment 2140 baseline road modification de règlement de zonage de quatre zéro chemin baseline. Councillor Harder has a technical motion, seconded by Councillor Tierney, I believe.
That's right, and it's, the document two contains a zone code typographical error that conflicts with the correct zone code, so this is correcting that, replacing the zone code GM with the zone code MC wherever it appears.
Okay, so the motion is a typographical error, Councillor Harder seconded by Councillor Tierney. On the amendment, carried. On the main report as amended, carried. Thank you. The bulk consent agenda, does anyone wish to remove anything from the bulk consent agenda at this time? On the bulk consent agenda is presented, carried. So we'll go back to item number, Planning Committee report number 14, floodplain mapping. Councillor Leeper, I believe you had a question. Is it on the amendment or the main report?
It's on the amendment, Mayor. I was at the planning committee meeting at which this was discussed. I believe it was the representative from FOTEN who came to planning committee and made a delegation that his clients had been unaware of the process that led to this. But my understanding is that the NVCA, you know, I'm trying to understand whether they're going to come back with anything different on this one with the additional time. So, Mr. Mayor, it's not unusual in a situation like this where clients have done a substantial amount of engineering work, where there can be a comparison of engineering results, and we think this is a reasonable course of action to delay this one piece. If, if the results come back the same, we'll come back for council's approval on this piece, but it's a reasonable dialogue for them to enter into with the Conservation Authority. Ultimately, those two parties have to work it out, and we will implement what comes forward. Do we run a risk that any sort of a development proposal might move forward in the meantime without that floodplain map in place? Mr. Mayor's staff would not recommend any development approval come forward for approval while that issue is outstanding. And if, if this motion weren't passed and the, it remains in the document, what would be their recourse should they wish to move ahead? Mr. Mayor, the applicants would have the right to appeal the council's bylaw to the LPAT, and we would be facing a hearing, and I think it's not in the interest of the city to face a hearing. If the parties can work this issue out, we can bring forward whatever resolution to council for approval on later date. Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, any other questions on the amendment or the main report? So on the Harder-Tierney amendment, carried. On the report as amended, carried, adopted. Merci. Disposition of items approved by committees under delegated authority suite à donner des articles ratifiés par les comités envers de pouvoir déléguer. Received. Motion to adopt reports, motion important adoption de rapport, Conseiller Gower, approved par Conseiller Luloff, s'il vous plaît.
That Community and Protective Services Committee report seven. Standing Committee on Environmental Protection, Water and Wastewater Management, report six. Planning Committee report 14, and the report from the city clerk entitled Summary of Oral and Written Public Submissions for Items Subject to the Planning Act: Explanation Requirements at the City Council Meeting of October 9th, 2019 be received and adopted as amended.
Okay, on the motion by Councillor Gower, carried. Motiones of which notice have been previously given, motion dont aviez été donnée entièrement, moved by myself, seconded by Councillor Cloutier. Whereas on September 24th, 2019, Councillor Rick Shirelli provided notice to the mayor and the city clerk, including medical documentation of his inability to attend a committee and council for an indeterminate period of time, and at least until October 9th, 2019 inclusive due to medical issues. And whereas at its meeting of September 25th, 2019, City Council considered motion 20/5 with respect to Councillor Shirelli's request for an authorized leave of absence, tabled the resolution to authorize the leave of absence for Councillor Rick Shirelli, and directed the city clerk to liaise with Councillor Shirelli and to provide an update to City Council. And whereas on October 8th, 2019, Councillor Rick Shirelli provided updated written medical documentation to the clerk's office, including his physician's recommendation for continued leave on medical grounds until November 11th, 2019 inclusive. And whereas in accordance with subsection 66 bracket five of the procedure bylaw, motion that has been tabled, a previous meeting of council may not be lifted off the table unless notice is given under section 59 of the procedure bylaw. Therefore, be it resolved that at its meeting of October 23rd, 2019, lift from the table the following resolution for consideration, be it resolved that City Council, City Council authorize a leave of absence for Councillor Rick Shirelli. And colleagues, at our last meeting, council decided to bring back Councillor Shirelli's request for council's authorization to permit him to be absent for more than three successive months of council meetings. Before we get to that, it would be helpful for us to hear from the city clerk as to whether there have been any updates from the council about his request for an indeterminate leave of absence. Mr. Clerk, has Councillor Shirelli been in touch with your office since our last meeting?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, he has, and he has provided a medical document that advised he will now be off until December 1st, 2019.
And Mr. Clerk, has Council Shirelli given you permission to share any other information with council about his condition? Appreciating that person's medical information is private. I know that Councillor Deans was pretty open about letting her residents and the rest of council know about her diagnosis, as have others in the past, like Councillors Blay and Middick.
Mr. Mayor, Councillor Shirelli has, in fact, given my office permission to share the doctor's note that we received yesterday, and I the doctor's note that we received yesterday, and I understand that it has now been provided to each member of council.
Now, before we vote on this question, on this motion rather, I just want to confirm the city solicitor, whether there are any legal issues or concerns that council should be aware of. Mr. Solicitor.
Mr. Mayor, I can confirm that there's really been no change in my position in this regard. Certainly, the decision as to whether to authorize the councillor's absence is not subject to any particular considerations under the municipal act. And as I noted at the last meeting, and appreciating that councillors are elected representatives and not employees, the kinds of considerations that might be engaged as between an employer and employee, and that includes, for example, the duty to accommodate under the, under the Human Rights Code for medical reasons, do not arise in this instance. That said, I mean, I might take the opportunity to remind council that the only issue before it is this request to authorize the councillor's absence from council so as to avoid the member's seat being automatically vacated pursuant to the municipal act. And that's should he miss three successive months of council meetings. Council is not, kind of strictly speaking, giving councillor Shirelli permission to be absent on sick leave that he can do without council's approval. So given the limited scope of what is before council, I would further advise that questions, comments or observations about the code of conduct allegations and the complaints that have been reported in the media are not relevant to the decision that council has before it today. And as such, I would recommend against members offering their opinions on those kinds of matters as part of its consideration of this item.
So just on that last item, Mr. White, you have the opinion that the integrity commissioner does have the legal jurisdiction to deal with the complaints of the nature that we've seen reported in the media?
That is my understanding, Mr. Mayor, and that is my opinion, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with that in mind, and seeing as how we really don't have any new information other than what the clerk has told us, I'd propose that we move to vote on the motion now unless there are some questions that any member of council has. Councillor Dudas.
I'd like to call for yeas and nays on this, please.
Okay. You're moving that the question be put, and second it by. A procedural question, councillor Brockington.
Can I just get the recommended clause up on the screen?
Motion is up on the screen.
No, just the, my my question is regarding the last sentence, authorize a leave of absence for the councillor. Do we not have to specify a time period?
No, Mr. Mayor, we do not.
So if this approved, is this indefinite leave?
We refer to it as indeterminate leave, but yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so that's important, just to clarify.
Okay, councillor Moffett on procedure.
Thanks, it's a questionable whether somebody, procedure, I wasn't expecting someone to press the button right before me and ask the question be put without any discussion whatsoever, so. Just to, on, obviously, as council is aware, I have been appointed to fill in in councillor Shirelli's absence in Bay, in, sorry, not Baywood.
In College.
In College Ward, and I sent a question about, so given the leave of absence, there's only specific, a few specific criteria that allow the position to be filled by someone not an elected member of council. So if it's an indeterminate leave of absence that, let's say, ran to the end of this term of council, does council have the authority to appoint someone to represent the constituents of College Ward that isn't currently a councillor of another ward?
Mr. Mayor, I do not believe so.
Right. Right, I think it's a ward because I think it's, it's not tenable to have three years, up to three years of a councillor looking after more than one ward, even if it's two councillors. That's all, thanks.
Okay. So councillor Egli.
Yeah, quickly, quickly on on procedure, depending on the results of the vote today, if a new medical certificate was to come forward, is that reconsider, how would that work?
Mr. Mayor, I don't think I would necessarily refer to it as reconsideration under the procedure bylaw, but if the mayor decided that it was new information, then the item could in some way be brought back.
And and when does the three-month period end?
Under the act, it's three successive months, and we we take that, interpret that to be the end of November.
Thank you for that.
Councillor Blay.
Thank you again on the procedural question. Given that there is a deadline in the in the doctor's note, but the the motion is for an indeterminate amount of time, can council revoke the leave following the the doctor's note, should that be required?
With the present motion before you, Mr. Mayor, I don't think so. This is a standard motion that we have used in the past on numerous occasions. It is also the one that I have worked with councillor Shirelli and agreed to. So I don't believe you could unilaterally change this motion. Let me rephrase that, Mr. Mayor, council can always do what it desires, however, this is the one that has been agreed to with the ward councillor.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so yeas and nays have been called on the motion that is on the screen.
Councillor McKenney.
No.
Councillor Moffett.
No.
Councillor Gower.
No.
Councillor Dudas.
No.
Councillor Brockington.
No.
Councillor Suds, councillor Egli.
No.
Councillor Hubley, councillor Elshantiri.
No.
Councillor Tierney.
No.
Councillor King.
No.
Councillor Shirelli, councillor Luloff.
No.
Councillor Blay.
No.
Councillor Deleuze.
No.
Councillor Kavanaugh.
No.
Councillor Deans, councillor Leeper.
No.
Councillor Menard.
No.
Councillor Fleury.
No.
Councillor Harder.
No.
Councillor Mihen.
No.
Councillor Cloutier.
No.
Mayor Watson.
No.
Twenty nays.
Okay, that motion's defeated. Next, motions requiring suspension of the rules of procedure, motion exigeant suspension des règles de procédure. Councillor Tierney has a motion seconded by councillor Harder with respect to municipal capital facilities, and there's a time issue on this matter that has to be dealt with, so on suspension, carried. Councillor Tierney, if you'd like to introduce the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, if this looks familiar. It's because it is familiar, we've already dealt with this, but unfortunately, like anything else, they forgot to include the basement as part of the motion, so you'll see attached image of the basement, and I'll just read, therefore be resolved that the bylaw 2018-275, which is effective July 11, 2018, be amended to add the addition twenty four, twenty-four thousand three hundred and seventy-nine square feet used by the Ottawa Public Library at 191 Laurier Avenue West, 120 Metcalf Avenue, designated as a municipal capital facility, exempt from taxes under the municipal and school purposes, and the associated municipal capital facilities agreement to be amended to include this additional area. Thank you.
Okay, so on the, on the report, or the motion rather, by councillor Tierney, seconded by councillor Harder, carried. I apologize councillor Kevin, I I missed your notice of motion, which is now before us, on parking revenues. And to colleagues, this is a new motion from the one that was originally printed, it's up on the screen, so the floor is yours councillor, and you can explain the differences which are underlined, I believe.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Yes, the the changes that you'll see relate to the, and I thank my colleague councillor Fleury for this, we wanted to make sure that we also included public transit. The the point of the exercise was to to write to the province and talk to them about parking revenue and and the ability to use this for for positive active transportation ways, so that we have a positive use for money that was just sitting there in an account adding up, and it was only allowed to be used for building more parking garages. It didn't make sense. This is allowing us to use this money, and if this pass, if if the province listens to us, this would be, of course, applicable to other municipalities across the province if they so choose. This is important because it's a way to make positive use of something that we're trying to discourage, i.e. people driving to work, so to discourage them with public parking, we need something to offer them. And if we can put funding into public transit, as well as sidewalks and cycle infrastructure, that's what we can do. So therefore, be it resolved that the mayor, on behalf of the city of Ottawa, petition the province of Ontario to make the necessary changes to the municipal act to permit the city of Ottawa and other Ontario municipalities the ability to use municipal parking revenues as a parking tax to fund projects throughout the city related to sustainable transportation, including sidewalk construction, cycling infrastructure, and public transit.
Okay, thank you very much, councillor McKenney, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, you know, the the money that is, the fees that are charged and the come from essentially areas where there is paid parking, that is mostly areas around BIAs, traditional main streets, and while I certainly support the the goal to, you know, make changes so that we can take this funding and put it towards more active transportation, the the one piece here that I have a hard time supporting is sidewalk construction. That's, that's part of our capital program. I'm not sure why money should be taken from one area of the city where, you know, businesses count on that to ensure that we, you know, use it for a variety of reasons, including sustainable transportation, bike parking, and cycling infrastructure, benches, all sorts of things that would encourage people to walk more and to move around the city in a different way, but sidewalk construction, I'm just having a hard time understanding why we would expect that funding to go towards what is already part of our capital infrastructure. So I'm not sure if the mover of the motion can speak to that, or would be okay with taking sidewalk construction out of the, out of the motion as a friendly amendment.
Okay, councillor King, please.
Thank you, Your Worship, and thank you to councillor Kavanaugh for introducing this motion. I agree with the sentiments of the motion that we should have a greater discussion about the disposition of those of those revenues. I support and second this motion because it is important to be able to expand future funding sources for public transit and active transportation infrastructure. This motion in effect asks the mayor, on behalf of the city of Ottawa, to petition the province to make necessary changes to the municipal act to give the city and other municipalities the ability to use municipal parking revenues for projects related to sustainable transportation in future budget years. Currently, parking revenue that is collected can only be reinvested into other parking projects. In 2018, the balance in the city's parking reserve fund was $24 million, and it was forecast to be close to that amount in 2019. Those funds, as part of the city's municipal parking management strategy, can only be used for the acquisition, development, and expansion of parking facilities, and the maintenance of lanes utilized for parking. This frankly is incompatible with a future vision of our city, which ultimately will call for more than half of all trips being made by by sustainable transportation methods, including walking, cycling, and transit. If our new city building goals, as outlined in the policy direction for our future official plan, calls for the creation of inclusive transportation options that will promote healthy living and reduce our carbon footprint, it will be necessary for the city to be able to access more revenue to actually achieve this vision. What better source of revenue to achieve this than from parking? The intent of this motion is therefore to ask for an amendment to the municipal act to include the ability for council to convert parking fees into a revenue stream that could be specifically applied to other sustainable transportation projects, including cycling infrastructure and public transit. This would be similar to the changes to municipal accommodation, which were added under the municipal act to allocate the use of specific revenue for the promotion of tourism. As we continue to seek to increase public transit and active transportation, our city will require more revenue tools than the rather prescribed ones that we have to to tap into. It would be ideal to tap into our parking revenue source to expand our vision for cleaner, greener, and more vibrant Ottawa. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you councillor, councillor Brockington, please.
Thank you, Your Worship, and good morning. I have nothing new to add to the debate. I think what I've heard thus far certainly hits the nail on the head and allows municipalities, including the city of Ottawa, more flexibility in how to use parking revenues for very good causes. I did circulate the original version of this motion by councillors Kavanaugh and King with senior staff at AMO. They had no suggestions for improvement, they appreciated the circulation, but it has been discussed that we should formally ask AMO to petition the province as well on our behalf, so I would just like to move a part B to this motion that would simply read that the mayor, on behalf of the city of Ottawa, requests the association of municipalities of Ontario's assistance in petitioning the province on this matter. And that's moved by myself, seconded by the mayor. Sure, that the mayor, on behalf of the city of Ottawa, requests AMO's assistance in petitioning the province on this matter.
So I think it's basically councillor Kavanaugh to allow AMO to help us in in the quest, so that's agreeable. Agreed on the amendment by councillor Brockington, seconded by myself, carried, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor Brockington, councillor Menard, s'il vous plaît.
Thanks, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I support the motion, but I just, I want to make a quick comment about our ability right now to do some of these things. The last meeting we had at transportation committee, we we did allow for some of this action to take place by looking at projects already underway, and I think that's, because I don't know that this is going to get resolved this term of council or anytime in the future, but if it doesn't get resolved, it does not restrict our ability to look at different ways of accomplishing this goal. And I want to make it clear on the table, we did that at last transportation committee through a through a motion by the chair, councillor Blay, and there are other opportunities, I think, to do the same thing in the future, to utilize some of these funds for exactly the purpose of that the motion is speaking to, without necessarily having this full change to the municipal act. It's been clear, there's an example of it now, so we can do this. This just makes it, this would make it easier if we got this change, so certainly support the motion, but I do want to point out that we have this ability in some cases here.
So councillor Kavanaugh will get to come back at the end to wrap up because you you have that opportunity, so conseil Fleury, s'il vous plaît.
Merci, Monsieur Mayor. Comme mentionné par plusieurs collègues, on a eu de longues discussions au comité sur sur le sujet. Moi, ce que je proposais à l'époque, ou ce que je propose encore, c'est vraiment de pas avoir à modifier notre autorité dans l'acte municipal, puis c'était vraiment de d'imiter le modèle d'Hydro Ottawa, ce qui aurait pu nous redonner une dividende à la ville, où là, par la suite, le conseil aurait pu identifier ses priorités. Je pense que la motion fait sensiblement la même chose, c'est d'obtenir cette autorité pour pouvoir dépenser ses stratégies. Toutefois, une des dynamiques qu'il faut faire attention, c'est qu'on veut pas identifier une autre source de revenu sans que ça soit en lien avec les priorités du conseil, donc je vois un risque moi à ce niveau-là, que si on obtient un nouveau revenu, la ville devient assoiffée du revenu, puis qu'on perd un petit peu les priorités du conseil, comme vous savez, on est une grande organisation qui a besoin continuel de fonds. Donc, je vais appuyer la motion avec réserve, je crois encore que le modèle de de créer une organisation telle qu'Hydro Ottawa pour la gestion des stationnements puis payer une dividende à la ville aurait été plus stratégique, mais je comprends, je comprends qu'il faut ouvrir la porte puis c'est une façon, c'est une façon d'ouvrir la porte. Présentement, on a cette autorité, donc si jamais le conseil charge d'idées ou si la province répond qu'elle ne donne pas cette autorité-là, on pourrait toujours créer une organisation.
Merci conseiller, maintenant councillor Leeper.
Thank you. Just a a quick question, I know the BIAs, I don't know that they've even had a chance to sort of digest what this might mean for them. As part of the new parking strategy, there is a fund that's being created so that some of the parking revenues that are received will go into projects that are specific- of the parking revenues that are received will go into projects that are specific to the BIA. How would staff see this motion working with those dedicated funds, or does it just stay status quo to what we approved?
Mr. Mayor, the, my opinion at first glance would be that there are certainly costs that the city incurs in administering the parking program, plus those grants would be lumped in together, and whatever, similar to what we've proposed through the new parking masterplan refresh, whatever funds are left over would go towards other projects. So councillor Menard was right, there, as part of the refresh, we've achieved over and above a certain balance, about $4 million will go to other projects. I would see that those grants would stay in place as well. So the notion here, and perhaps councillor Kavanaugh can just let me know if she's on board with, is councillor Kavanaugh, yep, sorry, the notion here is that, you know, you would still have some BIA-specific grants, and then the, and then the remaining funds after those grants could then be used for the more flexible purposes that hopefully Queen's Park would allow us to use them for. Incorrect, Mr. Mayor. Okay, Mr. Acting Mayor. And councillor Kavanaugh's nodding, so that's, that's good. Thank you.
Councillor Deane?
Thank you. While I understand the intent of what councillor Kavanaugh is, what her rationale behind doing this, I would just like to caution some of our councillors that it may be a little bit short-sighted in one respect. We require more park-and-rides in the South End and the West and the South of the city in order to get those nasty vehicles. You don't want the downtown core to be parked in our neighborhoods, in our communities. And by siphoning off some of the funds for cycling and sidewalks, which was the original intent, we're going to reduce the pot of money that we will require to put in these lots. We want, people in the South End and the East and the West want to leave their cars at home, but it's increasingly challenging. So if we limit the amount of space that we can build by reducing that pot, that's not good for the downtown core. So I would just caution everyone as we go forward that we don't want to cut off our nose to spite our face, we want, we want, we want to have those pots of money unnecessary when we want to build and expand our park-and-rides. Right now, Fallow Field is, it's chammed by 7 o'clock in the morning, so people who cannot park and have to go a great distance to get to LRT end up taking their cars. That's not ideal. Let's increase those parking lots, so let's not diminish the amount of money that we are going to have available to do that. Thank you.
We have a point of order from councillor Flory.
Good, but I think what's missed is we have a reserve account, so if today there's a project for a park-and-ride, we have, I believe, what's the amount, $24 million that we can assign, but council needs to just...
That's not actually a point of order.
Oh, fair enough. All right, just before councillor Kavanaugh wraps up, is, can the parking reserve fund be used to fund parking garages at park-and-rides outside of the green belt?
Yes. Mr. Acting Mayor, yes, again, the refresh was proposing to set a balance for the reserve fund, and anything north of that balance could be focused on park-and-rides. Thank you, Mr. Flory, and councillor Kavanaugh to wrap up.
Well, thank you very much, and thank you to my colleagues for the points that they have raised and the conversation. I appreciate from councillor Brockington the AMO's assistance in petitioning the province. I appreciate that, because this will benefit municipalities across the province. I do want to give a thanks to staff on their work on the municipal parking strategy as it is within the current restrictions. They've done a lot of hard work, and they should be thanked for that, that is the current rules. But what this motion is, is to look at expanding that, because we're pretty well dancing around things because of the restrictions that have been put on. And these are funds that are sitting there, and we have not been able to use them to the full extent. In addressing the concern from councillor McKenney about funding for sidewalks, maybe that's not something that's obvious in Somerset, but in Bay Ward, where we have a long list of sidewalks required, and these are something that inhibits people from walking because we have not been able to get them. We are in an older suburban area where they were built before sidewalks were in, and that now we're going to have a stage-two transit system coming through, and we don't even have sidewalks to walk to them. That's actually fairly common throughout Bay Ward, and we need to remedy that. So it's actually kind of related to the transit needs. Most of the sidewalks requests that I have been dealing with, and I've met with staff on that, are related to getting to transit, ironically. So it actually ties in. In terms of the BIAs getting their funds, we have agreements, and I don't think we're going to be breaking those agreements, so we'll be working, I'm sure staff will continue to work with them on their, on their requests. In terms of park-and-rides, I actually see this as helping park-and-rides, because the whole thing is, the ride part is the transit, and we want to make sure that we have good transit. We're not trying to take funds away from encouraging people to use transit, and park-and-rides do that. We want them to, to use those park-and-rides, so I don't think that it's necessarily one or the other. It definitely fits into the model that we're not taking as many people downtown by cars, that they're taking transit. So that should be seen as something that's going to help them, rather than discourage it. So overall, I appreciate the comments, and I hope I can count on your support. Thank you.
Okay, so thank you councillor Kavanaugh. On councillor Kavanaugh's motion, seconded by councillor King, yeas and nays have been called by councillor Harder.
Councillor McKenney? Yes. Councillor Moffat?
No.
Councillor Gower?
Yes.
Councillor Dudas?
No.
Councillor Brockington?
Yes.
Councillor Suds? Councillor Egli?
Yes.
Councillor Hubley? Councillor Elshantiri?
No.
Councillor Tierney?
Yes.
Councillor King?
Yes.
Councillor Shewellie? Councillor Lulaf?
No.
Conseil Blay?
Oui.
Councillor DeRusse?
No.
Councillor Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Councillor Deans? Councillor Leeper?
Yes.
Councillor Menard?
Yes.
Conseil Flory?
Oui.
Councillor Harder?
No.
Councillor Meehan?
No.
Conseil Clutie?
Oui.
Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Thirteen nays, seven nays.
Councillor Kavanaugh has a motion requiring suspension of the rules of procedure. Have you noticed the motion for consideration at subsequent meeting? Motion to introduce bylaws, motion important presentation de règlement. Councillor Gower, seconded by councillor Lulaf, please.
That the bylaws listed on the agenda under motion to introduce bylaws, three readings, be read and passed.
On the motion, carried, adoptez. Merci. Confirmation bylaw, règlement de ratification, conseil Gower a pris par conseil Lulaf, si vous plaît.
That the following bylaw be read and passed to confirm the proceedings of the council meeting of October 23, 2019.
On the motion, carried, adoptez. We have one written inquiry from councillor Dudas, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to bring up this subject that I know all of us are dealing with as councillors and even OC Transport staff. I'm going to read the inquiry. In the lead-up to the Confederation Line launch on September 14, 2019, transit riders and council were advised that service reliability would improve when the light rail train service began and when most crosstown bus routes were eliminated from Ottawa's core. I understand that the Confederation Line is new, and that with anything that is new and complex, there's always going to be issues that need to be addressed and fine details ironed out. However, the city's bus service is not new, and riders continue to experience issues with service reliability even after the launch of the Confederation Line. Riders have reported buses failing to show up at their scheduled times, certain routes being consistently late, or trips being outright canceled. A small sample of some of the routes that East End residents have reported experiencing delays recently include routes 228, 225, 25, the 34, and the 30. In some cases, residents have reported that the first scheduled bus on a route was significantly late. Prime example would be a 20-minute delay on the 228 on October 7. When buses are not showing up at the beginning of their route, it speaks to a larger issue with reliability of service. Additionally, since the transition to LRT, service start times for certain routes, for instance, the 30, the 37, the 35, are later, resulting in transit riders being late for work or seeking alternative transportation options. Would OC Transport staff advise as to what specific concrete actions and the costs associated with implementing these measures are being taken to address the following? Ensuring buses arrive as scheduled. Ensuring operational processes are in place so that when a bus is delayed, the impact to our customers is limited and clearly communicated. Reducing the number of canceled trips. And returning service start times to pre-LRT transition times in cases where riders and the ward councillor have identified this as an issue. Additionally, what is OC Transport's plan to improve and expand bus service in the East End in 2020, 2021, and 2022?
Okay, thank you. Councillor Kavanaugh, you wanted to amend the direction, which is not normally in the norm, but if your colleague will agree with you.
I just want to make sure that we include the West End, and I want to thank my colleague for bringing this inquiry forward, but we need to look at the West End as well, and I think councillor Gower would agree with me.
So councillor, are you willing to add the West End? I know this is more directed towards your constituents.
I certainly see it as a friendly amendment, but I'll have to say that ever since that I publicized that I was going to be putting this inquiry forward, I've been receiving communications from residents across the city. It's not just an isolated situation, it's residents in the core, in the suburbs, in the rural communities. I've seen it from all over, and I know in speaking with numerous members of my council colleagues that they've been experiencing reports back as well, so...
Okay, so we'll have the broader perspective, because there's obviously some concerns in different parts of the city, okay? Thank you. Next inquiry, I'm sorry, I apologize, we had a second inquiry that was submitted by councillor Tierney, please.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and at the risk of being considered the ramp king of the city, with obviously opening up a ramp in the East End and then Lee's just opening on Tuesday, I do have an inquiry because people keep asking me, and I know most of the answers, but I feel it's important that the public know, and so my inquiry is about, over four years ago, the province of Ontario, through the MTO, had indicated the eastbound ramp off St. Waugh Boulevard, northbound, access to the 417 would be permanently closed to all traffic except emergency vehicles. This forces St. Waugh northbound drivers that want to access the East End to go down Ogilvy Road, Innis Road, and other ways. But as noted in the diagram attached, most people simply make the return southbound, accessing the ramp, creating traffic issues. I would like to request the City of Ottawa contact the MTO regarding, one, the rationale for this closure, two, will this be reassessed in the future, and three, are there any planned future modifications to address this issue? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you very much. Adjournment, councillor Gower, please.
That the proceedings of the city council meeting of October 23, 2019, be adjourned.
On the motion, carried, adoptez. Thank you, meeting adjourned.